Morning. I'm an economist here in the Valley. I've been doing this for about four years. And I have to say, these are about the most exciting times I've ever been in it for an economist. It's pretty, pretty amazing.
Awesome.
And I'm trying to get the screen to go forward. So you got to give me back control, I think. Yeah, I'm not able to move the slides.
There we go.
Oh, there we go. Okay. So briefly, I'm going to talk about the US economy, the Arizona economy in that context, specifically about Maricopa County, and then some data points that I think might be useful for you. All right. So first, I'm going to go through a number of key indicators for the US economy, starting out with gross domestic product. And this is quarterly change, excuse me, this is quarterly change over the last 20 years. And you can see the cliff out there at the very end, which is the first two quarters of 2020, an amazing drop in, in, in the gross domestic product. This next chart is the actual dollar amounts, and you can see the drop again on the right hand side. The annualized rate of decline in the second quarter was 31.4%. Now, that sounds terrible. The quarterly rate was only 9%. So I wouldn't expect to see the same thing happen four times. That's how you would get the annualized rate. So things actually look worse than they probably were, because of the annualization factor. If you look at the red line on the right hand side there, what that does is it shows how far back you have to go in time to get to a US economy of the same size. So effectively, we lost three years because you have to go back from second quarter 2020 to second quarter 2017. This is initial jobs claims. These are new people filing for claims on a weekly basis. You can see the huge spike there in March and April when this all began, a gradual decline over time. Now, we, the graph says four weeks under 1 million. End of last week, we add another data point, we now have five weeks under a million. That's a very big deal. These are first time claims. They are trending in the right direction. By contrast, this is continuing claims. People are coming back over and over and over to receive unemployment. It's continuing to decline. And what we've seen is that the trend has been very good. And in fact, unemployment has dropped from the 8.4 for August on the screen to 7.9 for September. That's very good. Now, this is a list of the unemployment programs that we have. This is September 5th data. This data always lags behind a little bit. So you can see at the very bottom, there are 26 million people getting some kind of assistance for unemployment. The very top, state unemployment, that's what we think about all the time when we talk about the unemployment insurance and UI benefits. That's the number at the top. In the middle, I've highlighted the pandemic unemployment assistance. That's a brand new program, never existed before a few months ago. It's really important, and it's really important in Arizona, because this is effectively unemployment insurance for sole proprietors, small business people who aren't otherwise eligible for unemployment. You can see it's almost as big as the unemployment insurance itself. So very, very important for supporting the economy, getting money into the hands of people to spend and to support their lives. A very big number and a very important program that's actually brand new. So I'm going to, I'm going to walk through these pretty quickly. You can see the small red line at the bottom. That's basic unemployment insurance, the way we think about it all the time. And you can see it's rising up in April and May and then moving along. Then if you take that and you add on top of that, the yellow line, which is that pandemic unemployment assistance, and you can actually see it's bigger in total than even the basic unemployment. And then on top of that, if you add the $1,200 or $2,400 direct payments that came out in April, basically, you can see that's a huge number of dollars flowing into the economy to help support households. Now, on top of all that federal and state money flowing out to households through those programs, the personal savings rate, that's how much people set aside every month after they pay their bills. And if, this is the US total number for the last year and a half, basically. And if you look on the left hand side, side at the bottom, you can see it usually runs about $1.2 trillion a year. In April, it was $6.4 trillion. That's the, that's the biggest percentage ever in history. So what that, what does that tell me? That tells me that a lot of folks who got that $1,200 check or that $2,400 check for their household, saved it. Just a good thing. And you can see that that savings rate has remained very high and going forward. So it wasn't a one time phenomenon. It kept going on and on and on. In fact, the new numbers that just came out, it dropped down a little bit, but it's still over two, over $2 trillion. So a big number. So what does that do? Come on. There we go. So now, when you add up unemployment, pandemic unemployment assurance and the other programs, the, the direct payments of $1,200 or $2,400 and the savings rate, in April, you get $6.4 trillion. That is a giant slug of money. That's a whole bunch of money that went into consumers' hands, and that's why consumer spending has held up so well. And if you take, whoops, sorry about that. If you take the total savings and all those payments together, and you, and you run that forward from March and through July, you get $19.6 trillion. It's a huge number of, that's, those are dollars that are available for spending. And we did it again in, in August. And so now that number's actually up to $22 trillion. That's what's going to drive the economy going forward because, as you all know, two thirds of the US economy is consumption, personal, personal spending. That's, that's a really good thing. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody's life is good, but some households have saved some money and they're spending it slowly. You see this in consumer spending. You can see the rapid drop in March and April, and then a climb back up into May. That's a very good sign. It went up almost eight and a half percent in May, and then continuing to climb, but more slowly. And it went up 1% in August, which is, which just came in last week. So that trend of positive increases in consumer spending continues. That's a very good thing for our economy over here overall. Again, you can see that's the long term pattern the last two years. Huge drop there in April and climbing back out in May, June, July, and now August as well. So let's take a look at what all that means. When you then add on top of that, all the money that the Federal Reserve has shifted into the system, huge amounts of money. So this is a graph that shows the amount of money that the Federal, the Federal Reserve pushed into the economy after the 2008 recession. And if you note, right in the middle, over an 84th month period, from January of 2008 to January of 2015, they pumped out $3.5 trillion. That's a lot of money. That was, that was the quantitative easing we talked about. And you can see how that, that helped the economy. But now, look at this. This is the most recent reaction. Between February 26 and August 19, the Federal Reserve pumped out 2.8, almost 2.8 and a half trillion dollars in six months. 84 months the last time, six months this time, a huge difference. That's helping the economy pretty, pretty dramatically. And the same is true with the Fed funds rate. In, in the recession in 2008, 2009, they dropped the Fed, the interest rates to basically zero. They began to climb back up in about 2016, looking until the fourth quarter, if you remember, of 2018, when the Federal Reserve kind of got religion because the stock market dropped in the fourth quarter and they leveled off their, their rate increases, and then a huge drop in the first and second quarter of 2020. So on balance, what happens? You pump in $2.4 trillion from, from the, from unemployment assistance and programs like that. You put another $2.8 trillion in from the Federal Reserve. You backstop virtually all the debt in the country, both private and public, and consumer spending comes back. Not surprising. The real question is, for how long? Well, let's see if we can figure that out in the next few minutes. So I did this analysis, which I call my half back analysis. So in other words, how long does it take to get half of the jobs lost in a recession back? Right? So you lose 100, you get back 50, that's half back. It's a good way to see how the recovery is going. In 2001, you can see in the middle there, it took eight months to get half the jobs back. In 2008 recession, it took 29 months to get half the jobs back. And in this crisis, it's only taken four months. We are already halfway back to where we were in February. That's a very good sign. Now, the first half always comes easier than the second half. And so, you know, that rate of growth will probably slow, but a very important sign for a lot of folks. I'm going to quickly look through, I'm sorry.
Alan, it's Steve Chukri. So what, what's your prediction for the last, you know, for that last 50% to come back? Are we looking at 12 months, 18 months?
That will depend on a lot of things. Okay. And it's going to be very different by sector. And in part of the issue, now, this is US data, right? And I'll talk about this more a little bit later. But the US right now is very, very heterogeneous, right? So you have very, very large economies like New York that are relatively shut down, California relatively shut down. And then you have a whole bunch of smaller economies, Arizona, you know, Montana, the Midwest, that are partially open. So a lot will depend on the rate of reopening. And, and, and you can, we can see that, and I'll talk about it in a few minutes, in the current unemployment rates in different parts of the economy. I think Arizona will come back fairly well because we, our construction industry stayed employed the entire time. Our retailers are coming back pretty well. We see that in our detailed employment. The sectors I, and I'll talk more about this in a second, but the sectors I'm most worried about frankly are the ones you'd expect. I'm worried about restaurants and bars, of course, interest to you, sir. But also, I'm very worried about lodging and tourism and amusements, right? Movie theaters. Those are going to be very, very lagging, I think. So I think we'll see ourselves moving back faster because we didn't drop as far and we're progressing faster than the nation as a whole because of this dichotomy between some areas of the country and others. That will let, probably even out over the next three months, I hope, and will start to be more consistent. Right now, you know, it really is apples and oranges at the, at the, at the combined US level. So I want to do a quick comparison of the forecast by the International Monetary Fund. I showed these numbers to you a year ago. They were forecasting for 2020, 3.5% global growth. They were worried about Brexit and all those kinds of things. But a year ago, 3.5, now they're at negative 4.9. That is a gigantic shift, 3.5 positive, 4.9 negative. Now, this was in June, and that's a long time ago. These days, it doesn't seem like very long, but it's a long time ago. And there, just about a week ago, the IMF came out and said, we don't think the outlook is as bad as we said in June. And the recent data shows that the outlook may, may be somewhat less dire. Man, they must be economists, right? They can't say better. It's just somewhat, somewhat less dire. Oh, well, you know, so, but a huge change in, in the, in the forecast. This is their June forecast for various areas around the world. You can see the US is scheduled to be at negative 0.8. I think that's now too negative a number for 2020, but bouncing back in 2021, 4.5%. Much more negative in Europe and the UK, not surprising. So here's, here's a quote from James Bullard. And it's really a long quote. James Bullard is the president of the Federal Reserve in St. Louis, and he's a pretty good observer. He expects the rebound to continue in the US. We're getting better and better at dealing with safety protocols and things like that. He thinks that the overall production globally will continue to increase economic activity. That's all good. He thinks we may actually be in reach of a full recovery by the end of the current year. Now, that will take some pretty big numbers, 35% growth in the third quarter, 10% growth in the fourth quarter. As he says, those are big numbers, but not outside their own possibilities. So the medium term forecast looks pretty good. There's a lot of variables out there. I don't want to overstate it. Let's turn to Arizona. Again, a few key indicators, okay? So this is, this is US employment since 2006. So you can see the recession of 2008, 2009, and you can see the huge drop in 2020. Now, I want to layer over the top of the US, I want to layer over the top of that Arizona. And there's Arizona. And you, as you all remember, we were hit a lot worse in Arizona by the financial crisis because of our large housing sector. So we were worse than the US in 2009, 2010, much better than the US in the, in the recent years, as you can see on the right hand side. And if you note on the very right hand side, we did not drop down nearly as far as the US as a whole. That's a very good thing. That's very helpful for us. And, and here's Arizona's jobless claims. These follow pretty much the same pattern as the, the US ones, although I have to say, there's, there's some noise in the US data series. We had some delays in starting up some of our programs because we were just swamped with claimants. So I take these numbers a little bit softly. They're going through some revisions as we try to get the data cleaned up. But here's jobless claims, again, huge spike, and then a drop off now. Numbers look way better. 3 million people in July, 300,000 in September. Big, big improvement, big improvement. Same pattern there. This is retail sales, and this is the month and when the actual sale occurred. When did you go into the store and buy something? And so you see over here in 2020, huge drop. So there's, you know, January, February, March, April, boom. And then coming back out, May, June, July, continuing to increase. So people are still shopping. It's part of that big pile of money we talked about a few minutes ago. All of that assistance from the federal government is flowing through the economy gradually. People are spending money. That's very good. It drives sales taxes. Now, you don't get the money till two months later, but the bottom line is, we see people spending, and that turns into revenue for the state and for the county and for the cities in Arizona. Here, here is, whoops, here's contracting, same kind of pattern, very positive. If you note on the right hand side, again, this is 2018 through current. On the right hand side, 2020, contracting held up throughout the downturn. That's been really super strong. It's been good for employees. It's been good for sales activity, and ultimately, it's good for revenue flowing into local governments. A very big improvement. That's very positive. So I'm pretty happy about that. I'm going to digress for just a second and look at the state budget. Because as you know better than I do, when the state has a problem, you guys get a headache, right? That's kind of how it works. You're, you're the big, you're the big county, and so they look to you for help. So the forecast by JLBC for the cumulative expected general fund shortfall was $1.7 billion. That's a big number, but, but 1.7 billion. By quick contrast, the early forecasts in 2009, when Governor Brewer first took, took over, was that the shortfall is going to be 16, $1.6 billion. This is dramatically less severe than what was going on in that recession because we were hit so hard because of our reliance on housing. Huge collapse in 2008, '09, and '10. But they have some sources this time to offset that shortfall, which really weren't around in the last go around. There's almost a billion dollars in the rainy fund, rainy day fund. We're going to, we've gotten 1.8 billion in coronavirus relief. That, some of that can be used for public expenditures. We've got $600 million in education, another 237 million through increased match for Medicaid. So a bunch of money's coming in. What does that look like? This is all the details. I put this in the slides for your, for your verification. I won't go over it. Not every dollar from the federal government can be used to supplant, but a significant amount of it can be used. So in summary, what does, what does it look like for the state budget? 1.7 billion down, immediately 1.5 available, plus part of the 1.8 billion, plus a potential extension for the Medicaid match. Bottom line, the general fund should be okay. That's good news for the state of Arizona, and therefore, it's good news for you guys. So here's a quick look forward. So this is the, the blue chip forecast, the current forecast for Arizona. Personal income down in 2020, bouncing back in '21. Retail sales down. I think that number is too low, but certainly bouncing back in 2021. Population growth, I think it's, that is also too low. And single family permits, I know that's too low. People are still buying houses like crazy. But in all cases, they all go back up in 2021. That's good news. That gives us a good, a good outlook. So let me turn to Maricopa County real quickly here. So this is, this is again, business activity as measured by taxable sales. This is measured in the month in which the activity took place. When did somebody walk into the store? And you can see the top two lines there, contracting and retail, both, both remain positive throughout the, the cycle. In fact, everything, all of your indicators there, contracting, retail, restaurant and bar, lodging and amusement, they were all above 5% all the way through February until this began. Now, you'll note the ones on the bottom, restaurant and bar, lodging and amusements, they have not recovered. Restaurant and bar has started to flatten out, but it hasn't turned back up yet, quite yet. But, but again, the big categories, contract, contracting and retail are very positive. That's a good sign for your, your general fund. This is the slide I showed you before with US and Arizona employment. And you can see the collapse on the right hand side. I mean, we were doing better off there. Now, let's add Maricopa on top of that. As you recall, we did a little worse in Maricopa County compared to the state in 2008 to 2010 because our housing market was bigger. But we did better than the state of Arizona, and therefore, better than the US as a whole in the, in the recent years. And again, we didn't drop quite as far as Arizona and significantly less than the US in the past two quarters. Very good, very good news for Maricopa County in terms of the recovery. Here's the blue chip forecast currently for Maricopa County. Again, I think they may be a little on the low side. Every month, the revisions have been better and better. I think the retail sales number is too low. I think population growth is too low. And the employment number, I'm not sure, it might be too low, but it certainly all bounces back, as you can see, in 2021. That's very, very important. So here's some good news, right? So housing demand is super strong. Arizona permits up 25% year over year in the middle of all this stuff going on. US unemployment dropped eight and a half percent. Arizona only dropped 5%. Big difference. Phoenix had the slowest, smallest loss of jobs of any major market in the US. Very, very good news. What about mortgage delinquencies? I am far less worried about them this time than I was 10 years ago because there's high demand. If you get behind on your mortgage, chances are, you can sell your house. There are people out there buying houses left and right. Very different pattern. Selling a house in 2010 was impossible. 2020, really not a big problem. Slower reemployment, yeah, we're going to have to see some shifting going around. Thing I worry most about is deferrals of rent and credit cards because the deferral means, if you didn't have the money now, they think you're going to have the money in December. Probably not. That may be the problematic area, and, and some student debt, but we'll figure the student debt out. But credit card and rent, that, that concerns me very much. Hotels and hospitality, I'm very concerned about them. You can see that year over year, August occupancies, not our busiest season, but August occupancies in the US are down by about a third. 40% of all hotel workers in the US are unemployed. The worst markets were obviously places like Hawaii and Orlando. The least bad, least bad, places like Virginia Beach and notably Phoenix. According to a recent consumer confidence survey, 38, only 38% of people say they will travel sometime this year, meaning that, that 60% won't travel anytime this year. That's a really big deal for Arizona, particularly coming in wintertime. And the other thing is that the TSA counts, passengers on airplanes are way down. That's important for Arizona because the preponderance of our tourists in the winter season get here by plane. They fly in from cold climates. Some drive over from California, but most of them fly in from Chicago, New York, the Midwest, Canada, et cetera. So that, I'm nervous about tourism. I'm going to digress. That's sort of my, my overview of the Maricopa economy. I want to mention one thing we've talked about before, which is your expenditure limitation. Remember, it was created in 1980. It was a comprehensive plan to limit the growth of government, reduce property taxes, and reduce unequalized burdens across the, across the state. That program is now 40 years old. 40 years is like forever in Arizona. No one thought it would be around this long. It provides for the growth in your spending limit to be population plus inflation. And that's, that's an okay limit in the short run, not for 40 years. And why it's really important is that your major budget categories like, like public safety, as you know, grow faster than population and inflation. So those fast growing programs are putting pressure on the rest of your budget. You have survived thus far by accumulating what we refer to casually as carry forward. Carry forward is any revenue that you get, it's not counted against the limit. So in terms of the limit, it's like free money. But you've been spending your carry forward down. You got some help this year with some federal grants that were outside the limitation. That helps. But the bottom line is, some kind of positive step is going to be required for you to be able to deal with your expenditure limitation in the long run. Potential options that we've talked about, and you know all about this, is to include increased exclusions, modify the limit, very hard to do, and maybe some other options, dealing with some definitions and things like that. But even with all the sort of improving news on the economy, this is an area you need to be paying attention to. Now, real quickly, just a few comments on some things that I think you might find interesting, and then I'll wrap up. So at the end of 2019, the US debt was $21.7 trillion. It's now $26.8 trillion. It's now 130% of the, of the size of the economy. And it gets bigger every month. The debt is now $81,000 per person. That's, that's a lot of debt for my six year old granddaughter. And, but what does it, what does it mean in terms of the US budget? So we, remember, we have the extraordinarily low interest rates right now? So in 2019, last year, the US budget was $4.4 trillion. The debt was $375 billion. So it was about 11% of the budget, not a huge component, but 11%. So I, just out of curiosity, I went back and I just picked 2000. And I said, what was the average interest rate paid on US debt in the year 2000? If we paid for our current debt at that rate of interest, the, the amount owed would go from 375 billion to 1.7 trillion. It would go from 11% of the budget to 40% of the budget. So what is 1.7 trillion in federal terms? It's bigger than all US income tax collections. It's almost the same size as Medicare and Social Security. Yikes. And that is not sustainable. That is, that is something to be deeply, deeply worried about. Because we can't, we can't add 40% to the budget with no new revenue. That can't be done. So, and when, when rates begin to rise, you're going to see huge pressure on the federal budget. Consumer confidence, I want to, I want to pull the new numbers for that, which just came out this, this past week. Here we go. So this is University of Michigan. As of last week, you can see that it, they, it fell down and it began to bounce back up a little bit. And you can see, here's, here's the more recent period. But let me talk about the Conference Board. There are two measures out there, Michigan and the Conference Board. Conference Board released their September numbers, the, the end of last week, had a phenomenal increase, okay? The overall index was up by 15.5% from 86 to 102, huge jump. The current, which, what do people think about the economy right now? Jumped by almost 14%. And the expectations jumped by 18%. That means people think the economy six months from now will be significantly better than the current economy. That is the largest jump in 17 years. That's very positive. That means people are thinking, we're going to get through this. I talked about the half back. I talked about the uncertainty. I'm worried about the delay in stimulus. Households are depleting their savings. They're, they're spending that $20 trillion of savings. That concerns me very, very much. The good news is, the US, and especially Arizona, was extremely strong coming in. I do expect a significant number of relocations to Arizona, both people and production. We're seeing that already. We're seeing migration out of large cities to suburban areas. And truthfully, Maricopa County, even though we're a large urban center, much of our development is suburban like, especially compared to a San Francisco or New York. So I expect to see production and people moving here. It's a great opportunity for positive policy responses, infrastructure and manufacturing jobs. So what's the bottom line here? The US government response this time was much better, much more focused, much more effective than in 2009, 2010. effective than in 2009, 2010. The response of the Federal Reserve was frankly magnificent. Jerome Powell really rose to the occasion. I am very worried about federal debt, as I mentioned. But bottom line is Arizona is a great place to be. We came in strong. We'll emerge stronger. And the part strongest part of of Arizona is Maricopa County. So just be thankful that you're not the board of supervisors of like New York City. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Maguire. We always appreciate the the update. We find it very helpful, especially as we start going back into budget years again, and and those forecasts are extremely helpful to us. So I will start off with being that Steve asked a question. I'll go back to Steve Chukri. Steve, do you you have any questions or comments for Mr. Maguire?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Alan, it's always good to see you, even though it's remotely, and and hear your voice, and thank you for all you do for us. I've got kind of a three-pronged question. I understand, and I've seen how construction has really been strong and aggressive. We we see it in our permits coming through our planning and development office. But I've also witnessed in the past roughly 90 days that construction costs have gone up dramatically. And I, you know, there's a lag with that. And I'm curious to see if people are, if there's uncertainty, or those costs are getting so swayed, for example, lumber has gone up, I think, 50, 60% in some cases, that it could really throw someone off balance for new construction and maybe not necessarily affording a new home. So that would be my first question. Are you seeing that? Or do you think there could be a delayed slowdown as that catches up?
I think there will be some slowdown. I think it's really a supply chain issue. And, you know, we have supply chain challenges in a number of places where there was a shutdown maybe in April and May. And and so we were living off the January, February, March supply. And so the the supplies are now hitting the low point. I'm hoping that with the reopening of a lot of activity, particularly lumbering and things like forestry and lumbering, that some of those short-term supply problems will mitigate over the next couple of months. It may cause a slowdown and a temporary increase in in prices. But I think that should work its way out as as all parts of the economy begin to open back up again. Some of that is domestic, some of that is international.
Got it. OK, so more of a speed bump than anything else. You know, we rely on our sales tax revenues, which I think are holding pretty strong. However, our vehicle license tax revenues as well have have seemed to be down. I don't have the exact numbers. But have you any idea how car sales are going or here in Arizona, what we might expect in that realm?
So it's a it's a perfect follow-up question because, in fact, auto sales held up very, very well through the through the collapse. But then they ran into supply chain issues. The factories were closed, so there were no new cars coming to the lots. And so auto sales began to drop, not because of demand, but because of available supply. Again, I'm hoping most of many of those factories, particularly the Midwest and in in other places, the Southeast, have opened back up again. And so I'm hoping that that will be the same thing, sort of like a little gully in the supply that will work our way through. The nice thing about auto sales is they don't tend to disappear, right? There are two kinds of consumer spending, not to digress for too long, but if you skipped going to a movie, you're probably not going to go to two movies when you get back out again. But if you need a new car and you can't buy it, two months from now, you still need a new car, and you're going to buy it. So some spending gets deferred and some just goes away. I think auto sales are more the kind that gets deferred. And so as supply builds back up, we'll see we'll see a recovery and we'll make up for the lost time.
Right. And then my last question, Mr. Chairman, I promise, is on the hospitality front with the hotels, it's expected that you they won't see any any sense of normalcy to 2023 and maybe beyond that. Do you feel like Arizona weathered that storm? Or do you think we might be a little different than, let's say, California or Florida, where they've got Disney World and Disneyland and 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 that that economic impact has been very severe there? Do you are you hearing that as far as the hotel industry is concerned, that it's like 2023?
I'm concerned, number one, that that we're probably going to have losses of of operators. Some operators will not be able to continue. If you saw last week, there was a, I guess it was last, it was on Saturday, there was a story in the Wall Street Journal about the impact of what's happened on on New York, a Times Square in New York City. And half their hotels are gone, two-thirds of their restaurants are gone. I don't think that's going to happen here. I think the real key, as I mentioned, is going to be it's going to be air air travel. And that will be a function of how various sectors open up. For example, to just use one simple example, the constraints right now between Canada and the US in terms of travel, if those begin to ease through the fall, going into the winter, a lot of our Canadian visitors will be back down here, getting away from the cold up there, right? If those restrictions don't ease, that's a whole bunch of Arizona tourists that won't be showing up. You know, our our mix is kind of different. The good news is is that the same hotel day I made data I made reference to earlier showed that the hotels that have held up the best are resort-type hotels, places where typically there's a lot of space, a lot of places you can get outside, go around, do things. Well, that kind of defines Arizona hotels, right? You know, this is not like going to the Beverly Wilshire, which is, you know, 40 stories tall, and you're taking an elevator up and down all the time. We have lots and lots of resorts where you park your car and you walk to your room, you know? Very, very, much less crowded, much less dense, much more, much easier to do social distancing and get around and do things like that. So in a sense, that's why we were one of the areas that was less hurt of all the hotel areas around the country, because we have these low-density properties. So my hope is that with some improvement in air travel, we'll have a decent season in the 2021 season. And by 2022, 2021, 2022 season a year later, my guess of all our friends in Canada will be really cold and really want to come back here.
Great. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. OK, I'll next go to Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Alan. Thanks, as always, very, very interesting, very enlightening presentation and a lot of good news. So thank you for this good news on a Monday morning. We do appreciate it. You know, one of the things that really jumps out of this is, as we've been hearing these presentations over the years, you know, we've talked about sort of that slower growth in Maricopa County because of, you know, not getting the traditional level of migration in Maricopa County. So I'm hearing you say that, that you think that's going to, I mean, would it be fair to say almost back to more the historical levels of migration as we look into the 20s? Are you predicting that?
I think we'll see a significant increase. I I know of at least two high-tech sort of companies, both of which you would know, that have permanently closed their San Francisco operations. They've moved all their employees to remote. And I know of half a dozen of those employees that have moved to Phoenix. And one of them told me, look, I could buy a really nice house in North Scotsdale for what I was paying every month in rent for my dinky little place in San Francisco. So I expect to see that pattern continue. And I think we'll be the beneficiary of that. And I think that's not I'm not picking on San Francisco, and this is just an example. But I think we're going to see that pattern continue. I also think that we're going to see, because of a number of reasons, an increase in domestic manufacturing, especially for key things. I mean, this whole episode has shown potentially a significant overreliance on key imported products. And so I think manufacturing is going to come back to the US, not necessarily the same jobs, but things are going to get produced here in the next cycle. I think that's good. Arizona is a very favorable climate for manufacturing, so I expect manufacturing growth. And remember, manufacturing growth is what drove the valley and the whole state, but drove the valley in the late 50s, 60s, and 70s. So I think we're going to see patterns like we saw in the past. Because of our bigger size, I'm not sure the percentage will be quite the same, but I think the numbers will grow again. So the absolute number of people coming will be growing.
Well, that's that's pretty remarkable when you figure out coming off of being the fastest-growing county in the country already for the last three years, and that you're predicting that that might accelerate. So that's definitely, you know, incumbent upon us, as you referenced in there, to be looking at issues like infrastructure and getting ready for this for this growth. The one I would say the biggest headwind, the thing that concerns me the most that you mentioned in the presentation, was the debt issue. And you put a really fine point on it when you referenced what we would be looking at if we got back to, again, like 2,000-level interest rates and inflation. Talk to us about where you see that going in the last, in the next couple of years and what you think. I mean, I hear these things about shortages, you know, that concern me, you know, could we start having shortages in labor that might cause wages to be bid up and things like that? Can you kind of comment on that? I mean, that was a worst-case scenario, but how likely do you see us reaching that in, say, the next two to three years?
Yeah, I don't think it'll be soon. Chairman Powell has said he intends to keep interest rates effectively at zero at least through 2023. So that crisis is a ways down the road, but it's something to just keep in the back of your mind back there. You know, it's interesting. I think what we're going to see is a lot of chop in the employment numbers, you know, people changing occupations, you know, because what they used to do, they're not going to do anymore. It'll be interesting to see. I mean, for example, I I expect to see a lot of small businesses potentially close, but they may well be replaced by other businesses or frankly, larger national chains, right? So I hate to say this, but you may see a small chef-owned restaurant close because he doesn't have the the capital to survive another year. But a but a national chain does, or they can borrow the money. And so we may see a shift in the mix. That may cause some dislocations. But on the other hand, you know, there's going to be new occupations that are created. I mean, I I was on an airplane about three weeks ago now, and it was the cleanest plane I have ever been on in my entire life. I mean, I looked around and said, is this plane like brand new? It was it was so clean. I think those kind of patterns may stay around, and that's actual employment. Someone had to do that work, someone that didn't work there before. So there's going to be jobs created as a result of the disruption. It's going to be choppy, and I think that's why some support for people going through those transitions will be really important. But a very different kind of challenge than we had the last time. A lot of the folks that lost their jobs, particularly in Maricopa County last time, were relatively low-skilled individuals, right? So they needed a ton of retraining to be able, actually not retraining, training to get a different kind of job. We may see people move from one industry to the other, but not necessarily see the training crisis that we had in 2009, 2010, 2011. So maybe a faster recovery.
Well, thank you, Alan. Yeah, it's a great point. Supervisor Gallardo and I stopped by Creighton School District last week to drop off some masks, you know, in some of our efforts to support some folks. And the gentleman that we were working with there, he had just been at American Airlines. And what, I think Stevie said it was that? He started last week, right? And moved over to Creighton. So you're you're absolutely right. It's happened out there in the economy. Thanks so much, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Next, I'll go to Supervisor Gallardo. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alan, great work here. This is this is this is wonderful and really an eye-opener. Just one real quick question because you had two slides that are, for the most part, identical. I think it was Slide 37 and 49. It talked about the Arizona employment. In 2008, 2010, I get it, you know, housing market crashed, lost a lot of jobs. That I understand. What is it about Arizona that we did so much better than the rest of the country when it comes to employment? I mean, we are definitely doing a lot better than the rest of the country. But what is it in Arizona or Maricopa County that's different? The the earlier one in '08, '010, that is understandable. It was a housing market crash. That's what we rely on. But currently, what are what is it that we're doing differently?
Well, frankly...
Which is a good thing.
It's a good thing, and it's it's not a single thing. It's a number of things, right? The first thing is Arizona has a very positive attitude towards job creation and employment. We talk about it all the time because we are used to growing. The consequence of that is your your planning zoning folks, your permit people, same with the cities, you're good at processing new requests. So it's easier to get through the process in Arizona. We have a really great labor supply. We like to talk about how our kids don't have skills and blah, 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 blah. Well, I'll tell you what. I'll take our labor supply here over a lot of other places. So if I'm a new business and I want to open up, I'm going to go where I can get good, competent, motivated employees. And you can find them in Arizona, and you can particularly find them in Maricopa County. So it's a good place to come. And one of the things that's really, I think, sometimes overlooked is the way businesses make relocation decisions, right? So I'll 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 give you a specific example. It's an old one, but it but it really highlights the point. When Hughes Helicopter was going to move from California to Arizona, this is back in the 80s, remember, before it was McDonnell Douglas, before it was Spawling, a long time ago, and they moved out to Mesa. And I've talked to the guys who were responsible for that decision, and they looked around Arizona, and they said, Arizona's got a pretty good supply of the kind of people we want to hire. And their plan was to come over here, bring a third with them, steal a third from other employers in Maricopa County, and then hire a brand-new third that they would train. And that's exactly what they did. In fact, as they were getting prepared to open up their facility out in Mesa, they had people standing at the shift changes that allies signaled down by the airport, handing out sheets of paper that say, we pay 15% more than you're getting right now. That was them stealing employees, right? Because there was a labor labor force in place in Arizona. And they also knew that if there was a labor force here, there were systems in place, community colleges, high schools, and universities, generating that workforce so they could get more that way. They they didn't decide to go to, you know, Billings, Montana. They came to Arizona because there was a labor force here they could build on. And we have seen that process expand over time as our economy has gotten stronger and more diversified. For example, one more real quick one. We now have sort of a national caliber cluster of businesses in the educational software industry that sort of grew up all by itself along the 101 corridor, kind of from, you know, Scotsdale down into Chandler, right? Lots and lots of employees building educational software. Well, if I want to build a new educational software application, I'm going to go to that corridor because I got lots of employees I can pick up in my process. That's one of the things that makes Maricopa County such a positive place. You've got good employees. We got a lot of them. They tend to move around a little bit, and so a new guy coming in can find employees relatively quickly.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's that was it. Just great job, Alan. Good info. Appreciate it so much.
My pleasure.
OK, I'm going to, before I turn over to my vice chair, I'm going to do something a little bit odd that doesn't usually happen. But Joy Rich, you you represent a very large part of this of this group, and that you have a lot of people working under you. And I kind of I'm asking if maybe you wanted to take a little bit of time, either comments or questions for Mr. Maguire, because I worked a lot with you and everyone else setting this budget. And this budget was really difficult this year because we didn't know what to expect. We were first in on the pandemic, and and we were seeing shutdown orders, and we were wondering what that was going to do. I was wondering if you wanted to ask any questions to Mr. Maguire or let us know how what your feelings are right now, because this, I always reflect back on Mr. Maguire before coming up to the budget process. And these numbers make me feel better for our next budget because I didn't know if we were going to live through this one for these next couple of months. So any any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just to let you know that, you know, Cindy and Leanne and I had a meeting, I think it was Friday, to talk about where we've landed so far this year. I mean, we just didn't know where we were.
We're having a hard time hearing our...
Oh, OK. Joy, bring the microphone up a little bit closer.
Does this help? Are you? Does this help, or can you hear me OK?
Can you guys hear Joy?
Not really. Not really. I don't know about Mr. Gates.
Bill, can you not hear Joy either?
Not very well, no.
Joy, come, you know what?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me from this microphone better?
How about now?
That's better.
It looks like everybody's nodding their head, so.
Okay. I don't know. This may be a bad mic over there, but, Mr. Chairman, Cindy and Leanne and I met on Friday to kind of go through where we're at so far for this existing fiscal year, and we are continuing to exceed expectations. I mean, we were frankly very fearful about where we would be at this point in our lives when we were putting this budget together. And I think it'd be probably productive to have Cindy provide a couple of brief comments about what she is seeing. But, you know, what happens next, where the world goes next? I feel like we're in such a tenuous circumstance. We're very pleased at where we're at. We're very pleased about what we've seen. But I feel a little bit like we don't know. I mean, hearing Mr. McGuire's presentation makes me feel a little bit better moving forward, but some of what we've seen, in my mind, defies description or explanation, to be honest with you. And I guess my question to Mr. McGuire would be, do you feel the same way? Because we thought we were going in with our eyes wide open, very high level of concern, but particularly where we've seen our permits go and continue to go is astronomical. I was speaking with Steve Trussell from Rock Products on Friday. Their industry is overwhelmed by demand. It's just what we're seeing just seems to defy description and analysis. And I don't know if Mr. McGuire feels that way, or because he's an economist, it all seems pretty clear to him. But we'll have Cindy comment on our revenues to date, but we're in extremely good shape, and we're going to enter the next budget year in extremely good shape. And I don't think any of us frankly anticipated being where we're at.
I'll just make a real short comment. I can tell you that every single forecast I have made since April has gotten better. I mean, my numbers in April were not quite, but almost the world is ending. And they've gotten better and better and better and better every time I've updated things, because not hugely better, but moving in the same positive direction. And that's a good thing. I mean, like, you know, the US economy added almost 900,000 jobs in September, and 96,000 of those jobs, 10% of them roughly, were local governments, counties and cities. So what that tells me is that counties and cities are doing okay. They're doing okay. Now, K-12, they laid off almost a quarter million people. Those weren't teachers. Those were all the people that ran the buildings that they're not in, right? The janitors and the food service people and all those support people. So some things are up and some things are down. Bottom line is, because we push so much money into the economy, as we talked about earlier, I think that's coming back. I'm hoping that that will last long enough or that we'll get another injection. And that's what gives me some positive hope. I had never done that analysis, that big triangle that I showed you. I'd never done that before because there was no reason to. There was so much savings that was created in April, May, June, July, August, that people consciously made a decision, I'm going to cushion my household for the potential bad news ahead. And that's really helped a lot. So God bless Americans, you know. They thought about it and planned, and it seems to be holding up. I got my fingers crossed.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Supervisor Gates raised the issue of all of this debt that collectively is being built. When do we pay the piper on that?
Yeah, you know, since I did that calculation and scared myself to death, frankly, I've been trying to figure out how to get rid of that, what to do about that. I drafted some, a couple of policy papers a few years ago about trying to figure out a way to move retirement savings, right, out of the stock market into US debt, and as a way to absorb some of that debt, to reduce the pressure on the federal government. Japan has a system that sort of does that. But frankly, I'm trying to find a way. We're going to have to probably raise taxes. I don't know how you get rid of all that debt. We can grow our way out of, I don't know, $10 trillion worth of debt, but probably pretty hard to grow out of $30 trillion worth of debt, because you can't catch up fast enough, you know? So I'm very concerned about what that means and what it means if there is a recession in three or four years and revenues drop. What is that all going to be, you know? So I'm very worried about that. We have not seen as much debt, well, I shouldn't say that. Some governments have issued debt, local, New York did, a few other states did. Arizona really has not. So we're going to see, again, this very big difference in different economies. I mean, the unemployment rate in New York State is 13%, or New York City, rather, 13%, and LA, it's 15%. And in Phoenix, it's 5.9%. That's a huge difference, 15% and 6%. So again, I'm worried about the overall US economy because of the debt burden, but I'm not so much worried about Arizona and Maricopa County.
Well, you heard it here first, then. We'll make sure we get you back here in 10 years. So, okay, I will now turn it over to Vice Chair Sellers.
Thank you, Chairman. And Alan, another great, comprehensive report. Thank you for that. You know, I'm looking at the growth that we've had in the technology industry and the defense industry. The defense industry here probably mainly because we don't have natural disasters. But, you know, we have population growth. We have these high-tech and the defense industry growth jobs that are very high-paying jobs. And through all of this growth, I guess my main concern is whether or not we're really planning to deal with that growth as we go forward. And I know you and I have both been involved in a lot of the same organizations that are trying to look at putting a plan together. But I'd like to hear your comments about what we need to be doing to ensure that we can keep our quality of life where it is that attracts all these people and companies to come here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sellers. Just two quick comments. The first thing is Arizona has grown for a very long time, and that growth has helped us fund all kinds of infrastructure projects over the years. I do worry that we have gone from being sort of net investors in infrastructure to net consumers of infrastructure. And the simple example that I use, and it's not as good as it used to be. It used to be a lot more dramatic, but I'm sure all of you can remember driving from Phoenix to Tucson in the 1970s, right? And you were kind of worried if your car broke down, no one would find you because the road was so empty and lonely, right? You drive from Phoenix to Tucson, now even with the third lane, and it's a really busy highway. What does that mean? That means that in 1970, we had excess capacity on our interstate system, and now we're at capacity. And I can make the same analogy for some other systems, like water and sewer systems and things like that, that we've used up a lot of capacity. And because of pressure on our budgets over the last decade maybe, we slowed down our rate of investment in infrastructure. That concerns me, because all those past investments in the 60s, in the 70s in particular, and even into the 80s, those investments have been carrying us along, and we need to be putting infrastructure in place for the 2020s and 30s and 40s, just like we did half a century ago. So I'd like to see more infrastructure. I know that's hard, but I believe when you see the performance of our economy, it's justified, and frankly, it may be essential that we do so.
Great questions. Boy, we've brought up a lot of topics: infrastructure, labor, unemployment, or reemployment. The shifting of our industries, manufacturing coming back strong to Arizona. So I really don't have any questions or comments. Just, again, thank you, Mr. McGuire, for coming in and briefing our board about this. Joy, thank you for your questions and your statements. So I do believe that there is going to be a problem, I think, with growth and infrastructure keeping up. And I would entice those laborers and those tradesmen that are living in other states to give Arizona a good, hard look, because Arizona is known for their growth and their climate. And if you can make it through three months, you've got nine months' worth of great living here in Arizona. So I would entice for this fast-growing, beautiful county of Maricopa that people will decide to maybe come and take a look and build their future for themselves and their kids and grandchildren here, just like all of us natives on this board have been doing over the last couple of years. So again, Alan, thank you for coming and sharing the report with us. I appreciate it very much.
If I could make one last comment?
Sure.
Just like one sentence. One thing that, I know you guys know this, but I want to say it clearly. Maricopa County government has been an effective government for decades. It's provided stability and a good place to build a family, get a great job, and live for your whole life. And a lot of that credit, frankly, goes to your staff. You have historically had very good staff, and you have a very, very good staff right now. I'm sure they're all sitting over there being anxious about the future. They should be anxious about the future, but they're great people, and they will hold this county and this board in good stead going forward. And I just want to recognize that effort by both them and you as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGuire. We are taping your comments, and I know that we have an election coming up in a month. We'll take that as a testimonial. So, yeah, it's a real honor to be on this board with everybody on here, looking at the needs of our community. And it's great to follow on the leadership that's been here for the last 20 years that we were able to inherit, and inherit a great way of doing business and government for the county. So thank you for that. Okay, with that, I will look for a motion. It looks like item number two is we have an executive session following this one. So do I have an emotion to go into executive?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Sellers.
I move that we go into executive session.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So let's hold on, guys. Let's have a brief instruction about how we are going to do executive, because we are moving out of this room and going somewhere else. Fran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, if we'll go through this door, we'll be going over to a room where you can have executive session. And I believe that the supervisors that are online have instructions about how to call into that executive session. If not, if you'll let your chiefs know, we can get the information to them so that they will be able to call in as soon as we go into the executive session room.
Okay. So it's a very, very short walk, just across the hallway, guys. So let's make sure that if you can jump on the phone quickly, let's do that. It's 10:34 on my clock, but I'll give you five minutes or less to, because we have some topics to cover. So see you, guys, in about five minutes. So see you guys in about five minutes.
Deb, are we ready?
Yes, Supervisor Gallardo and Supervisor Gates are both on the line. I'm not sure if Supervisor Chukri has joined back in yet.
I think he was gonna call in like he did on the first part of the session.
Muted.
Supervisor Chukri?
Supervisor Chukri, have you joined the call yet?
Deb, can you send Paige the phone number? Is it the same that we used for the other room? It is? Anita?
I'm sorry?
Same number?
Same number, they called for informal, yes.
For informal?
For informal?
Yes.
Is that different than exec?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Unmuted.
So will I see Bill and Steve's face here shortly? Do they come back?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Steve, you're here now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how about Supervisor Gates?
I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Awesome, and Supervisor Gallardo?
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I've heard my whole group, I might not be able to see 'em right now, but I know they're out there, so with that, we'll move on back into, we are in open session, and item number three today on this agenda is the Maricopa County versus Purdue Pharma, so I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Sellers?
I move to approve the one Arizona opioid settlement memorandum of understanding between the state of Arizona and Maricopa County, and delegate authority to County Attorney Aleister Adell to sign the agreement on behalf of Maricopa County.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, with that, that brings the business of the day to a conclusion, thank you everybody, got ya at 12:02, so you guys can go enjoy a nice lunch, so thanks for got you at 12:02, so you guys can go enjoy a nice lunch, so thanks for joining me today and we are adjourned.